Okay, we are recording. I will call to order a special workshop. It's been called. Uh, we're trying a new procedure here. Uh, do you want to go calling the whole nine yards or? You all present accountable for. Thank you all for making time on a non-regular council night for for this workshop. Again, as as I was indicating, we've had real success. We certainly had success at the retreat. Uh, we think that there are times where we can have conversations a little bit better in a smaller setting. Uh, we're sitting not at the dias all spread out, uh, where we can be more effective in terms of some of these workshops. So we're gonna try this, uh, format and procedure, test it out, see how it goes, make modifications if we feel wrong, but uh, so we're starting with this one. So Mr. Devin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and House members. Uh, so this is our first study session, City Council Study Session. Um, and we are going to talk about the, uh, the purpose is to discuss the establishment of the City Council Housing Advisory Committee. And, uh, what we're, what we're doing tonight is basically presenting a very brief summary of a two-page briefing paper. It's actually, we've been over two pages, but that's because we added a couple of letters for the appendixes that that were added.
You don't try that trip again. Two pages means two pages.
Yeah, I agree with you. Um, the, uh, the information that we presented references, uh, the council's interest in forming a housing advisory committee. Um, it includes, uh, information, uh, that was generated from the root policy, uh, workshop, uh, that occurred back in, I think it was, uh, March of twenty twenty-one. Uh, and it also, uh, references, uh, a, uh, expression of support for a housing advisory committee that occurred during March seventh, city council meeting, and then a, uh, subsequent document that Councilman Louis Smith sent us, uh, which, uh, is also included as an appendix, uh, to the information that's presented tonight. Um, and then we provided some analysis, and in part of that analysis, we offered two alternatives. Uh, one was to go ahead and appoint a city council housing advisory committee, which we would do by resolution. And in the information I presented in this briefing, we talked about it being either by resolution or ordinance, but I think, uh, after a further discussion with the city attorney, uh, it could be, it could be provided by resolution, which actually is more simpler, because it doesn't require the, the actual graphing of an ordinance, and it would only, it'd be done in one meeting. Um, and then the, um, the other alternative is to appoint a task force, uh, that would, um, uh, also, both of these options, the, the advisory committee or the task force would would both look at the root, policy committee report and focus on specific sections within that report that lays out strategies, uh, that we believe would be the, the best place to start for the, uh, how to to look at, uh, uh, you know, potential changes in housing policy, housing, housing, uh, programs and so forth, uh, in order to implement, um, uh, in order to have, convene a housing advisory committee with a clear direction and clear scope of work, of, of, uh, what to focus on as part of the changes, potential changes to housing policy, uh, that we have right now in the city of Nevada and with the housing authority. Uh, we have with us in addition to Lori and Linda, we have, uh, Housing Manager Gary Espinoza, Director of Viper Community Neighbors, uh, Vanessa, sorry, Vanessa Daines, and Vice-Selcy, uh, uh, who is here to, uh, answer any questions that might come up regarding the land development code, any changes to that. That's really about all I want to say, because this is for you. This is for you guys. This is for you guys to have a discussion, and we are here as resources, uh, to support and, uh, uh, you know, enrich your discussion in any way we can. Uh, but, uh, I really didn't want to provide much more information than that. I think you guys all know the subject matter. Uh, and so, uh, we're here to stand by and support your discussion and, and, uh, uh, receive information from you in terms of the next steps. So with that on.
I guess where I'd like to start is a discussion of task force versus committee. I mean, is that sort of the sense of, you know, what I'd like to get people's input? Let me, let me back up here a little bit. This came down at a meeting I was not at, and I think that there was, and, you know, I know that there's public kids that are on the, on the call, and we're all here, and we all work remarkably well together. I am convinced, after having watched the, the video and having, um, you know, talked to individuals, that, that this was not an orchestrated attempt by some to push this down the throats of of others. I do truly believe that it sort of took on a life of its own at that meeting, and, and I am, I am truly valuing each and every one of you and believing that your intentions are pure, that there was no backroom negotiations. The city council does not work that way, and I don't believe that it works that way with individuals on this situation. Um, I, I, I truly believe that, um, had all seven of us been there that night, there might have been more discussion and, and, you know, pros and cons may have been discussed further. And so that sort of brings us to where we are tonight in terms of some of that. But I, I don't, I don't question the methods or, or intentions of anyone on council as to how this is the force here tonight. So let me start with that. Um, so I, but I think we do need to have a discussion as to committee versus task force, and so I'll, I'll throw it out to everybody to sort of indicate what their, their views of are on the pros and cons of that. Um, I think there's clearly a majority of, of, of council, you know, I can count before just easily as the next person, that wants to move forward on this. Uh, I think there might be two to three individuals who would like to, to move at a slower pace on this. Um, I, I don't think that there's any doubt that we have significant housing issues in Nevada. Um, and in terms of being able to, of course, you'll be happy to hear, I just came from an urban renewal meeting, where we've got eight to twelve units that are part of the old calendar house that are on, that are being rented for about eight hundred bucks a month, including utilities. So, so every once in a while, there's a little pockets of, of some truly affordable, uh, affordable housing. Uh, but, uh, I'll throw it open to the, to the group in terms of where you want to go with this.
I, I would start with maybe just a, a question of maybe a quick discussion on what is it that we would expect, whether it's a task force or a committee, what would we expect them to do, and, and what's realistic about what can they actually? Um, so we can have lots of desires and wishes that, you know, we can do all kinds of things, but, but from a practical matter, what could something actually do? And that might lead us to an answer about what should this be? Should this be a committee or should it be a, uh, a task force? That's what I would suggest.
My, my sense is if we get a basic idea of, because, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Devin, the idea of the task force is to study if we need a committee or we just move straight to a committee? Or is the task force?
The task, the idea of the task force was kind of an intermediate step before appointing, uh, a permanent committee. Uh, and it would be to, uh, work with, uh, our team on the, looking at the root policy report and developing the priorities and scope of work of what a housing advisory committee would work on.
Okay, so that's, you know, it's the intermediate step. So if we were to go to the committee, basically then we could spend our time developing what we want that MO, what that tap, what the, those policy goals to be, and, and kind of cut out some of the interim time essentially, because it almost sounds like Plan B, that the task force just gets us back to Plan A. It just takes longer.
And it, it would give the city council, I think, an opportunity to, to, uh, it would take longer. I can think it would give the council an opportunity more precisely to review what the housing advisory committee would be responsible for prior to actually implementing.
Oh, yeah. Uh, uh, and, and my thought is, is, is perhaps if we were to go decide the committee route, what we could do tonight is to identify some of those goals, and then we, it might just shorten the time of getting that scope of work together and, and then delivering it, um, and being able to move.
Can I, can I just, uh, just quickly, so, you know, one of the things we have to go on is that root policy study. And so there's, there's some recommendations in that root policy study that are not ongoing things or one-time things. Uh, one of them was to deploy our PABs differently. Um, and there was no detail in that study at all. It didn't say, here's how you're deploying them. You should deploy them like this. It just gave a general recommendation of that. So I would suggest that's a kind of a one-time thing, but that's not necessarily a ongoing year after year after year thing. It's probably a one-time thing. Um, there was other discuss, other things in that root policy recommendation of, about, in, in simple terms, you know, you, you create subsidized housing by either subsidizing it with money or you let them build something different than you let anybody else build, or, or you would donate free land to them. So donating free land to them seems like a one-time thing, because there's only so much land the city owns. So that doesn't, that's not something that needs to go on year after year after year after year. It's a limited amount. Same with, if you wanted to have a group to discuss building something different than our land development code allows to be built, because it's affordable housing. That seems like a one-time conversation, not a over and over and over conversation. So if those are the expectations of it, my suggestion would be that a task force is ideal for that type of thing. If there's a different expectation that is something that, that the desire to do is, and that it isn't ongoing thing, and it's something that it can do, um, because there are other, you know, there's, I've heard of in some of this material, other suggestions like that, citizens can go find grants. Okay, so my question would be, can, can they actually do that? And if he answers yes, then that would be something that maybe is a now and forever kind of on, ongoing thing. But the first question to me would be, is that something that the, the city can actually do to empower citizens to go get grants on the city's behalf and do our professionals? Is that, is that a task being done that citizens can perform for them? So that, so to me, that's why this discussion about what are our expectations? What do we, what are our expectations here? Because that might lead us to task force or ongoing, ongoing committee. That's, that's just my thought. I don't know if I've got it properly very well, but I'll try. Um, so thinking about the task force or a committee, um, well, let's just talk about the committee for a second, because the task force, I think, is, based on what I'm hearing, is a little different, but it's an advisory committee to who? To the city council? Okay, so kind of like, um, the planning commission, or is it more? So then, that's my understanding. Okay, and I'm just trying to wrap my mind around kind of the, you know, uh, what that committee, so the committee made, let's use sustainability for a second. They came to us with an idea around trash.
Never should have formed that committee.
I'm just trying to keep it light and easy, yeah. So, so they came, they came to us with this idea around a single hauler, and there was enough on council to say, let's, let's take that to the next step. So is that, so if this committee, this housing committee were to come to council with a recommendation that the council needed to donate some city park for development, that's what you're expecting this committee to do is to find those kinds of things?
I, I think that could be part of it. I don't necessarily anticipate them coming up with a, you know, let's take Majestic U Park and turn it into, uh, Fort Lazimatos. That's clearly not going to be, but yeah, kind of like that. It's their idea to come up with potentially creative solutions for, for grants, and yes, John, sometimes I think these will be one-time things, because as we all know, when you're undertaking a major initiative, oftentimes you work on that initiative until it's accomplished, then maybe you move to the next thing. It's not like every task has to be repeated. Trash hauling is a one-time thing. We took one-time vote on it. So, um, I think that's the general idea, is that they're able to take some of this work off of Carrie and her team, who are already expended at maximum levels, and bring us clever ideas out of the side of the box thinking, listen to the community, and perhaps give us recommendations that we can adopt or not.
I would argue that the sustainability committee brought a huge amount of work in the city. I, I, I don't buy that you're reducing the workload for the city team. I mean, that's, but, but they brought, they brought a, they brought a project that laid it in front of us that said, we don't have, this is David speaking. We don't have, we've got this great idea. We don't have necessarily resources to, to, to take it to implementation. So that's now the city's job to do that. And so it could, it, this, this type of committee, any committee, regardless of what it is, could create additional burden, um, to the city team and require additional resources to support, um, from a pure development, developmental perspective. So again, I'm just, I'm trying to understand through the conversation, um, how, uh, how that works and how does it then burden the team?
But, but look at it this way. We may not have the lens to know that one person's show is enough to deal with this housing issue. And, and, and maybe this advisory committee, I'll give you an example another way. Transportation advisory, they walk every street in the city looking for missing sidewalks. The staff, we couldn't make the staff go and do all that, but the advisory committee went and did it, logged it, and took all those notes. They tried to find all these other projects and tried to figure where, you know, they knew there was a lot of money. Um, honestly, they came to us, it'd be hundreds of millions of dollars that they would want from us. Right. Uh, but, you know, they just realized what is doable, and they give a sounding board for staff to, you know, throw ideas at, and, and having a diverse group to say, yeah, that can work, maybe that won't work, or because like now, the transportation advisory committee is doing, uh, they're now getting, obviously, they see what I do. They, they came and took a tour of what's in that desert of technology. Now they're like, oh, well, how do we help the city use technology to better itself? And, and honestly, I need Don in here. This, you all know, Don's doing some remarkable things. I want you to hear what he's doing. And some of that has bounced off of the transportation advisory committee. And so having that ability helps this group here as sounding board, not always us doing mostly.
It's an extra layer of expertise. I mean, I see that as a sustainability committee. We have folks, you know, scientists from N R L. We have, you know, a different array of folks coming from their different backgrounds that are residents. We're able to tap into their expertise that we have here. I think that's needed on this issue. I don't see it as a one-time thing. We're going to address it and be done, let's be honest. I mean, sustain, you know, uh, housing is not something we're going to solve and, and check the box and call it done. I mean, it's going to be an ongoing problem for this committee, and we hopefully can get and find solutions that are going to help to, to get better and better at it, so it's not so much a problem. But I don't see it getting solved in, in one, two, three years.
And there's ongoing regional conversations that we're not at the table with, where this committee, right, this, uh, team doesn't have the bandwidth to go to these regional meetings, you go to these one-off sessions. So this would give some supplemental, uh, attention to regional issues and regional collaborations.
Didn't, didn't Lakewood create a housing committee?
Yeah, there's Lakewood, there's Root Field.
How was it? And I'm asking because I don't know, do we know how those are, uh, working? I mean, are they, are they getting the results from those committees that they had hoped?
I think each committee depend, is different in what you want as outcomes, so I wouldn't know what their outcomes are, but.
Mr. Devin, do you have any sense in talking to your fellow managers?
Um, you know, uh, speaking of Lakewood, I don't think I've ever talked to Kathy about their, what they call their housing policy commission. Um, that's some, that's some information I can, I can certainly.
That would be helpful, just to, or just their charter. As simple as their charter, where is, where is their task?
Well, I'm wondering, to what extent can we, instead of doing a task force that we as the council, that our team sort of set the parameters of what we're trying to do here, and, and the charter? And, because, because if, if, if we simply appoint, you know, my biggest fear is we appoint a committee that doesn't have direction, and they've got grandiose ideas that are not within our bandwidth or our financial capabilities, they're going to be frustrated. They're going to be frustrated with us. And it's, it's gonna, it's, it's gonna be a lose-lose.
And can I just throw out a lens a little bit different, because I've shared with a few of you, it's not just affordable housing. We should look at all of our housing and outlook, because I still struggle with the gated community conversation. And this committee should be used, because maybe it makes sense, maybe it should be in our code, maybe it should, but you know, we don't have assistance, you know, discussion. And then we get enough information to say, oh, you get your community, because it came up in a metro district debate to, to, to gate Candela's. I told John this the other night, and you and I kind of chatted about it, but it's like, holy cow, you would take over all that infrastructure, all that problem, all these other things that we're not thinking about.
You want to vote too?
We want their own gun tower. Um, we can get your viper up there. I'll watch my beer chilling lights. But, but you know, but it's not, it's affordable and attainable, whatever words we use. I agree, that's probably eighty percent, maybe seventy percent of conversation. But I don't want it to be so narrowly focused that it's just not, there is some weird, like that gated one is just one that popped up on us, because I think we were all in that hearing. It said, well, we've never allowed these, but we'll let you decide. And I don't think I had enough time to really think about, is this a good thing? I mean, it made sense as okay, we proved it. But, you know, hindsight, it would have been nice to have an additional sounding board that would have said, yeah, those work out fine. They understand the risk. And we should codify it in our code and just let any developer wants to do it, do it, you know?
Actually, go ahead.
That's the extreme. I want to, I want to see the full spectrum. I don't want it to be.
I agree with that. I like that idea. And one of the things I think of is potentially, and like how transportation committee went out and they logged all the missing sidewalks. This could be a great resource for when, say, a developer buys something like Howard Ranch or any other, uh, potential parcel of land, and they want to go and develop it. Who, yes, sometimes they talk to us, but because they wind up in front of us, we're not really truly allowed to speak a lot to the developments. They could be a sounding board for the developers. What will fit in this neighborhood? What will be compatible? What will the residents accept? And then, you know, that way, that actually helps us get to the right projects on the front end, uh, and you don't get as much blowback from the neighborhoods.
Here, what I see as an issue though is that, yeah, it's like, I, I look at the state sustainability committee and see the problem there. The problem is just, uh, o, o, open-ended, um, no mission, just open-ended, impose anything you want. Kind of thing. Well, I, I, I read, I read yours, and I read it four more times than four other people sent it to me.
I synthesized everything today.
But, uh, but anyway, the, uh, the, the, things like you mentioned, the gated community. Who, the, who, the people who populate this committee would have a great impact on.
But you're assuming he's the mayor.
I'm not assuming anything. I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm saying that it would, yeah, and same with if you're talking about reviewing potential developments before.
No, I think they may be consulting, and then the developers can be like, what are your thoughts on what could?
I get it, but, but by, by whatever, by whatever, whatever there is. The makeup of that is so, I think, entirely different than what I've heard from people who have pitched a housing committee to me. So what, what's been pitched to me by every advocate or who, all the people who think this is, this is purely just a how do we develop more subsidized housing? I haven't seen any, any suggestions that it does anything else. And that's a very different group of people than, than somebody talking about gated communities or whatever. I, I don't know that that's going to be satisfactory for the people who are desiring.
But if I don't want it to be narrowly focused, if we're talking about the first city, you know, Stock University of Housing, it has to be the full spectrum of discussion of housing. It can't be, you can't, I think, granted, I think our weakness area is maybe affordable housing right now. But at the end of the day, it's also how do we paint our, you know, color by numbers neighborhoods? And how will they be shaped and look, and whether it makes sense? I mean, you know, Denver is now gating almost everything, and especially upon the Aurora border. If you go down there, every apartment complex, every little thing is gated down there now. And it, maybe that's the way it goes. I don't know, but I, I'd rather have an advisory committee weigh in. Look, uh, I think you can shape the housing committee to be clear of having certain professions mixed in to result in diverse view, and I think we just need to explore that.
And David?
Sorry, David. You were.
Can I ask you a question? So as you think about this housing committee and, um, how it might benefit you, where do you see the benefits? Or what are the pros and the cons that you thought through a housing committee?
Sure. So I think one example is, Root Policy did a nice job of identifying the needs of the community. Uh, and they gave us some strategies, but I think where we're falling short are some goals. What are, what are the goals out of this? Out of those strategies that they provided, those strategies, they need to be researched. And I think that the, that, that could be one of the, um, tasks assigned to this advisory committee or this task force is let's look at all six of these strategies, and do they make sense for our ballot? Maybe some don't. I believe that these are probably the same strategies that Root Policy puts in every housing assessment. And so we need to, before we start to decide to utilize strategies, let's make sure that they're the best one for the community. So I think that that is one, um, area where they could be done.
Well, just quickly, this, this goes like to full duty, like when we do this housing, uh, uh, center down on fifty-second Marshall, is it the right strategy? I asked a question. Is it, it's not, we know it's not going to solve the problems. It's a, there's wraparound. I feel that there's wraparound of different services and environments and housing and, and services. This is just spit in the bucket, and is it the right spit in the bucket? And is this the best place for us to put money, you know, to, to try to solve homelessness? I don't know, and I'm, I'm not going to speak for the team, I mean, but I think it puts a lot of pressure on the team to try to figure out how to solve something that's bigger than us. It's a regional issue, and, and I don't want to get all into the homeless regional stuff, but this housing committee could be a component on the cog that can help with maybe strategizing around exactly what she's saying. And I, I feel like, I still worry that some of our strategies just, we're just throwing money at it, and is it, is it truly a strategy at the end of the day? Do we, what is our desired outcome, performance outcomes? What, do we think we're going to succeed in reducing the number of homeless on the street? Or the, in this, what I refer to as physical homeless? Um, are we helping them?
So you agree with the fact that looking at kind of what the study has spit out as recommendations, that we need to understand that better?
Well, and maybe goal, and that, like, I, I, she's spot on, exactly what you said is spot on. And I think the advisory committee gives that, that, uh, sounding board to vet that out, and then come back in front of the city council and say, these are some of the goals that we can do around those strategies. It's ultimately for us to decide. It's my, everyone says it's an advisory committee. I don't even call it policy. I don't know what I'm going to do with Lakewood. This is an advisory committee that is advising us on, on some potential goals or something. I think things can change over time, you know, um, but also weigh in on, on codes. Here's, here's an example. You remember I wanted a senior advisory committee too?
Don't forget the youth ones.
Thanks, John. I think somebody remembers my youth one. I will, I will never play out. Okay, thank you. But the senior one, the, the example you're trying to senior one, and I see this as applicable to this conversation is, there was a conversation that why seniors don't want to walk to the park? Do you remember this conversation? The reason they don't is because bathrooms. Well, you know why? Because we didn't think about bathrooms, because we just designed a park for kids. We didn't think about it, but we want everyone to walk. Well, if we had a senior advisory committee that wound up said, hey, we can weigh in on park design, and maybe, you know, Mark Laius needs to have a bathroom by his next car. I'm sorry, retired. You're retired. O G, O G. So, um, trying to be polite, too. But, you know, I see the advising, uh, housing advisory could play some role in those conversations when we talk about shaping, uh, our communities.
Is there a fear from the city team? Because I, my perception is there might be that we create all these committees and it just becomes babysitting work for the city team to have to staff them.
I don't want it to be that.
And I, and I, I, right, exactly. I don't want, I don't want that line. But is there some perception from the city team that that's what happens?
So I think, uh, I, I, I don't know that I would call it a support, but I think what's.
But I think what's really important to do is that if we're, if we're going to form a committee like this. We need to have a precise scope of work. That that is is supportable and doable by a citizens advisory committee. And and fits into the policy direction that the city council wishes to go. Uh, and and then I think we also need to be honest about resourcing that scope of work and that advisory committee. I can, I can tell you right now that forming an advisory committee like this is probably. I'll say probably, probably more, you know, and it it maybe more rarely unlikely, is going to require an additional FTE. And the reason why it will is because we don't have capacity to load this on to to the housing manager. We don't have capacity within the housing division where the technical expertise to load it out of anyone else, if you guys, if you guys. I'm wrong, they're letting you know. And then.
Maybe more in that group, just curious.
In the housing division, we're a total of ten.
So, and 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 a lot of those ten are very technical oriented team members who are focused on specific programs.
And I will also add that seventy percent of the team is branding. So we are just getting trained, they're they're learning their own processes.
Right, are any of those ten people paid for out of CBD funds or housing funds? How many of them are paid for out of federal funds versus our citizens tax dollars?
Um, I would say eight out of ten are federally funded.
So that, that's the expense that comes out of our housing choice program or something?
Um, the housing is not for more than CD.
So what, but if you think about what this committee could do, it could be a means to formulate more funding to support your work. That is one avenue that that could take, so when we're looking at it from an ongoing perspective, not from a, like a task force media, from a. Committee perspective, there's ways that we can utilize different types of fundings, different policy ideas. You know, there's tons that we could do to help enable that, but I agree with you, Carrie, that I think. We need to really look at the policy and decide what we want to leverage, wouldn't work well in our data. And what are those short and long term goals, I think that the committee could use that as a resource, as their guiding compass for that first year. To establish it and then change and iterate that guidelines of what they're gonna be doing. So in that, in this kind of one pager that I did, I synthesized those, and I'm sorry, I didn't make an extra copy. Um, what I did though was synthesize the recommendations from Root Policy, the one pager in that draft. To show a couple of bullets of what they could do, so some kind of scope of work that would help for committee duties. So you can understand what what's an ongoing, what's a short term, what's a long term. Part of that initial committee rule could be that we're establishing guidelines of what we actually wanna do. Do we wanna change the development code, do we wanna have linkage fees, do we wanna housing trust? Those are all areas for them to explore and provide those recommendations, we say, yes, we need this. But for us to have anything short term, it doesn't seem reasonable because this issue is not going away, it's growing. If you look at that top three housing needs, so to Bob's point, it's not just trying to get affordable units, yes, we need those, but it's also looking at. How do we promote homeownership, that was fifty percent of the respondents of that policy report, said that they are looking for starter homes, not.
Did you, did you see the Denver Post this weekend that said there are no three hundred thousand dollar houses?
And four hundred thousand goes extinct probably by next spring.
Well, and, right, I mean, and and that's the thing about, you know, you have a goal that says, well, we're gonna figure out how to build starter homes, three hundred K below, but. You can also wish you're taller, neither's gonna happen.
We're better looking.
Or or just give the dollar amount to say that current medium, you know, whatever that dollar is for that year, but we need to have a goal that says we want more startups for that.
You know, what do we establish as a starter home in our data and how do we promote those kind of abilities?
What brings up to me is is what my fear with it would be.
She was still talking. But you can go ahead and.
I'm interjecting, I'm interjecting and you can, you can keep talking, is that it's a, that that how does it? How does this stop from just being a political action committee sponsored and funded by the city?
It's not a political action.
But linkage fees are.
That's a strategy for housing.
That's just a digital strategy, yeah.
They're exploring. I I remember answering that question, I remember council answering that question once already, so.
But that is just one option for them to explore, so the the point of this committee is not to, you know. Demand affordable housing, but more so explore, what does the city need and what is the city able to do? What is digestible for the city, what is the appetite of the residents, what is the capacity of staff? So when we're looking at it, I think that formulating a housing committee, not a task force, makes the most sense. And with that first initial formation with, and on the back, it has seven suggested members, that does diversify the perspectives. You have, you know, someone who are new if they want, a developer, a real estate person, so it's not like a, you know, one sided argument to demand affordable housing. This is different perspectives around future developments in fill. Um, so we would be able to use that initial committee for the first year to say, what does the city want? What does the team recommend, what does the research say, and then make those suggestions to council and we go from there.
If you had a crystal ball, I'm sorry.
I just typed it.
This is just trying to understand your perspective, if you had a crystal ball and you, and you thought forward, you know, five years from now. Do you see the city utilizing this committee to then be in the development business?
No.
Okay, and what if, what if the market? To John's point, what if the market ever comes around to support that AMI that is affordable? You know, I mean, because I think about, first house I bought was two hundred seventy five thousand dollars. That was twenty years ago, you know, and now that's nowhere, can't find that, that was in our data, that was in West North. You can't find that anywhere, so how do we, how do we? Also look at the the market conditions and, you know, what a developer. Would want or need to come and develop that project or a project that fits some. Yeah, metric around housing stock.
I don't think the market will ever solve any sort of affordability challenge. But I think what we can do is create systems or programs through the guidance of this committee that might incentivize them. I don't think that developers are just gonna flat out stop building in our data because we might put some some goalposts here. On what we're looking to obtain for affordability or what incentives or what fees, I don't think that they're all gonna mass exodus out of our data. So I think that what we can do as a city is we can create some policies around. What would be digestible for developers, what would be good partnerships? I don't think that a housing committee would be able to help supplement some of the work that the city is doing in the sense of vouchers. Or, but what they can do is help facilitate stronger partnerships and say, hey, this funding source is here, this partnership or nonprofit is here. That might also help developers, you know, there's also nonprofit developers, there's even foothills with Jeffco Housing Corporation. There are developers that we underutilize in my perspective, that I think is is local to Colorado, they built and they're doing a really great job, so.
So another question, again, ask because I don't know the answer, but, you know, one of the things that I hear, or I've heard. Um, is, you know, there's this stigma around affordable housing that links. Um, that maybe that's a less desirable neighborhood. Um, and and I don't want that kind of neighborhood in my backyard, I'm not saying that, but that's. That's we hear that all the time, yeah, and and how do we, how do we combat that? With that?
Those people.
Yeah, how do we combat?
Actually, live in one of those neighbors.
I don't, I don't think you're wrong there, you know, when I was the case manager, I'd have to go into low income housing units and sometimes there is some more ruckus than you would expect. But there's different ways that you can create housing programs or incentives, that's why I would support more voucher based. So there's a, one program that they could research would be a landlord guarantee, where you could have. A pot of money essentially, basically, if we did this in Boston, it's twenty five thousand dollars if you opt in to host someone that is a voucher recipient. And if they do any damage, it'll cover up to twenty five thousand dollars, and the actual utilization of that program was around five percent. Because they didn't need to claim a lot of things, but they were nervous of taking in a voucher or a gracie recipient because of that stigma. So you could incentivize more landlords to take on voucher based recipients through a program like that. A flex fund that could be established to this committee.
Where would the money come from?
Well, that, you could establish a housing trust here, you could apply for a grant.
But where does the money come from?
Yeah, so when you establish a housing trust fund, it kind of pools all the different types of money, you can get foundations to donate, you can have grants. You can tie it to a fee, you know, you can tie it to a permit cost, there's tons of different strategies that you could. Get that money, you can even have private donors, you can have a state person donate it, but if you establish that housing trust. Then you have an option to get all sorts of money from different spots.
I think this conversation kind of beats around the bush a little bit about, you know, the the broad general question of. Should municipal tax dollars subsidize people's housing, I mean, we currently don't do that in a, in a giant way, we do it in a small way. Because we have, we have staff that we, that aren't, aren't paid by federal dollars and we have given land. That's that's us as taxpayers subsidizing somebody's housing in one way or another, and the conversations always beat around the bush about, well, if. Somebody's developing something we like, we should give them free water taps or reduced fees. Or let them build something they wouldn't build otherwise, all of those are just different ways of municipal subsidy of of housing. And my fear is, is that that's the low hanging fruit, that's the, you know, that's the goal of affordable housing really is to. To expand the affordable housing through the use of fifty percent of all the tax dollars in Colorado or local government, city and county. The other fifty percent are the state, so to 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 gain access to that pool of money. And my fear is, is that a committee like this isn't, wouldn't be primarily looking at things like. Some of these things, but would be primarily looking at different strategies to getting municipal subsidies for some people's housing in. One form or another, regardless of what that form might be, whether it be creating a flex fund out of city funds or whether it's.
You didn't say, development.
I know, I I know, but I asked you just where would, where would it come from and and then, I granted, there's. Different places it could come from, but the low hanging fruit is the two hundred thirty million dollar organization that's right here. That people have access.
Once again, we can accept or reject the, we define the scope, we accept or reject the recommendations. So if we, you know, I I I think what we're doing here is we're placing an assumption on a group of people that are not even. Um, and then we're going to the worst possible place with it and we're letting a fear define it when in reality, we have the power to define it.
Well, I I know, I would disagree with that, because I'm not making any assumption about.
No, you just, you just did make an assumption when you said the low hanging fruit, what I'm afraid of, your exact words, is it will become this. Those were your exact words, so we.
But I was talking about the committee, not any person.
I know, I know, but that's what I mean, this is, we define who's on this committee and we give them the scope of work. Therefore, we are able to tell them, here's your scope of work and where you can operate, they don't get to deviate from that.
So so just, so carrying that further to say, look at sources other than city funds.
Yeah, we can say that.
Well, but again, I guess I'll defend John just a little bit here.
Oh, don't.
But from the perspective of councils change.
Yeah.
And so, that directive of house, you know, look for funding other than taxpayer dollars. The council, some council from, you know, by Gersham now could say, well, no, look at only taxpayer fund, and so that's, I think, the.
Well, that's gonna happen with or without an advisory.
Yeah.
Turn around and say, Mr. Manager, we want fifty thousand dollars to be injected for our house, I mean, we could push that right now, I mean. So, I I don't, I I think if we're talking about being informed a little bit more. We can't just rely on the small team here to do that, or we're just saying, let's, let's make a diverse advisory committee to get more informed on these subjects. Before council just pulls a card like that, because you're absolutely right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I would just add that I think, you know, as as we are thinking about what the scope and tasks of this committee are. I mean, I agree that we need to say what we expect to have them do and and make sure that that is clearly defined. No one wants to become part of a committee and not know what's expected of us. And I would argue against the fact that the sustainability committee does have that as well, sustain our data. That was the plan that was handed to them and that's what they use as their metrics and that's what we are constantly using as our goals and and what we're doing. So I think the same thing can be set up here, um, and, you know, I feel like we also though, I would not. I would advise against taking off something off the table and say, you can't even look at this. I think all options need to be at the table because it's such an urgent problem. And again, they come to us as advisors, we are the decision makers, but we're relying on them as part of the expertise that we wanna get their advice from. And so I feel like we should, you know, make sure that they are able to research and provide recommendations based on what is out there. What other can you use or do, and what are the, the most strategic and effective ways right now today that help address this problem? So I would advise not to eat something very specific off the table, I think all options need to be evaluated.
Yeah, I think that's fair, perhaps then we say, don't look exclusively at city funding options, we really want you guys to think outside the box and be.
Okay, tell my employees what they shouldn't do, don't break the law, but everything else is free game, right? It's almost that, you're saying, look, just, you can come and figure out funding, you're just not a big city guy. Let them go figure it out, let them go wander the pastures and find the money, I mean, that could be one example, but.
Personally, I like the idea, to Randy's point, of people being able to explore out, like, we don't have the capacity to be able to do this. What is, you know, cities that are facing very serious affordability crises like San Francisco, Manhattan? What are those cities doing, San Jose? Yeah, Boulder, what are they doing right now or not doing?
What have they done that's been counterproductive?
Yeah, that's right, all of these things, what have they done that's been counterproductive? And what can, what are they doing or not doing in order to, you know, address their problems? And also what got them into their problems, that could help them for months before our problem gets as bad as that.
So is it fair, you just can't pause and get like a Dutch, I think it's fair to go with a committee over a task force? Or be understanding of these kind of ongoing things that we can iterate or change scope within the committee?
I'd rather have a committee, I don't want to waste time or money on that.
Randy, you're in agree with that?
I I feel like this is an ongoing challenge, it's, we need to have a committee that's gonna be looking at, you know, new resources that come on board. To be able to recommend, um, you know, new tools as they get developed, I think it's something to be on.
My sense is housing never changes, for right now, we're having an affordability crisis. Twenty years from now, maybe Denver tanks as a market and we're Detroit and then we have empty housing everywhere and we need them to switch mandates. Housing never goes away, it, and the scope can change over time depending on what the city's needs are. So I I think it's good to have that resource who can be responsive to that.
And and this is what I'm hearing from you is that you really wanna score play this, really study it.
No, I mean, I just, I think that we, as consultants, we have a report, we have the guidance. So this committee in that first year could be exploring what those recommendations are, what are the best uses of of. Those recommendations, what is our data, what works for our data, and that's just that first step of the committee.
So, so David and John, hearing that there are four people who are, who are strongly in favor of a committee. What do you, do you want to see to have a committee move forward rather than a task force? To put some, you know, either bumpers on it or, you know, guardrails, so that we don't be, I I, what I don't wanna see. Is a committee that just runs amok and is a waste of time because, again, we've set it up. Here, here's what I would, here's what I'd like to see, and I'm fine with a committee, I can count for it as well. Um, the, I I would like to see the makeup of the committee be in the charter of the committee. And that it doesn't, over time, just become enthusiasts, because that's our sustainability committee, it's just enthusiasts, we don't have any. Particular seats for somebody in industry, somebody in, somebody in that, it's just people who are interested in that who, you know.
Aren't all our committees that way?
Of enthusiasts?
No, I mean, we specify in other committees that we need a certain seat filled by X.
Well, in certain places like, or or, or excuse me, AIDA, for instance, the Board of AIDA fulfills certain sectors.
So like others comparable, we got transportation parks, what are the other advisory committees would be compared? So like others comparable, we got transportation parks. What are the other advisory committees would be compared? Do we specify who needs to sit on those committees?
Do we have goals for all?
I could look that up really quick.
I don't think we.
I don't think we do.
Well, we could do, say, for example, the seven members, and we could actually work on the number, but the seven members, for example, maybe five required of these specific, you know, areas and then two flex, you know?
Yeah.
I think it, I think it would be, you know, like if you're gonna have a housing committee, you ought to have somebody go actually provide housing on it.
Yeah.
So you have a different perspective than somebody who gets housing, you know.
So I think, can we, can we put you on here as a landlord?
Never move. That's probably not a good idea.
No, but I think a land, you know, I mean, you know, either a apartment project or.
I'd love to see someone.
So what's your thoughts, in terms of what, what? Yeah, so I think, because I, you know, I don't want this to become divisive among.
I don't know. I mean, that's, that's, I think the way that Lisa framed it with kind of this first year, um, it it almost feels like a task force because they're they're truly gonna lay the groundwork for what the committee ultimately could focus on. And so I think the way that Lisa's framed it up um, helps me feel like there's some some guardrails on it, at least in that first year. And then obviously, I think if as a council, we're willing to come back after that first year and say, okay, what's working, what's not working, and how do we then kind of readjust? But I also think, I mean, I I get where you're coming from, Randy, as opposed, you know, from the perspective of are we saying you gotta have this, that and the other? I I think that this particular committee ought to have some experts of industry um, on that, on that committee.
Well, let me give you another example I just thought of that. Our building code advisory committee fulfills certain slots, like they're not just enthusiasts, they're electricians, summer contractor license.
So I think it would behoove us to 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 have that as part of the charter because we're gonna get a better committee.
Yeah.
And and there are probably some enthusiasts that are also
Yeah.
in that space.
That tends to be what we attract. Like when we interviewed sustainability committee, I mean, there was a scientist from NREL and let me tell you guys, you guys have a memory of him, he was exceedingly impressive.
There was more than one.
Fine, no, there was more than one. Like, we actually were turning away people with PhDs in climate science because they didn't make.
Well, these people apply for our commission so much harder than I.
I know, and so I'm not worried about us.
Again, I like the way this is framed in.
I I do too, Lisa. I really appreciate, and frankly, well, it gives me a much greater comfort zone by having people who, and I'm thinking, you know, in addition to somebody like a George Thorne, who's, who's, who is a developer.
Do you want to just build the list?
As a developer on the list?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think George Thorpe's a nice one.
But but hang on, the, the, one of the wishes of this is starter homes under a certain dollar, whatever that is. That's not a subsidized developer, that's gotta be a market rate developer. So I think, I think that might be careful. Might be, might be different because I think there should be a developer who can help subsidize housing. But there should be a developer who doesn't as well, who has the.
Who can provide gated communities.
Well, they can provide perspective on on the market when 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 we say, well, we'd like you to build starter homes for three hundred grand. Why don't you do it? They can say, well, because a water tap costs twenty six thousand dollars.
Which is an interesting situation with our water. I mean, I could see that conversation with the water.
But but right, for it to be more effective, I think, I think it, I think it needs
A balance.
It it needs those types of perspectives that you don't get if all you have is a subsidized housing.
Absolutely. I love the idea of a realtor on here. I mean, you want to talk about the people who are right there with the families, you know? Yeah, closing homes and getting people into homes and finding out exactly what they're looking for.
I think we need parents with a kid in the basement.
Yeah. Seniors, well, what they're looking for, looking for to move into. But a a realtor can honestly speak to a lot of those different.
Is the set size the right size? Is it?
Initially could be bigger.
I mean, I think it could be ten.
Nine? Well, because, because another thing is I don't want all developers to be there. I'm trying to do balance. You might want to have two developers, maybe two, you know, maybe a real estate person.
I would go bigger than ten.
I would either know, but I just don't, I don't know if we would get the diversity in the initial review of what the charter should look.
With seventy seven.
Yeah, because you want.
How do you invite somebody?
I don't want to invite anyone. I don't. If you go, if you have a larger committee kind of in this initial.
People will attrition off. They always do.
I just always, I would say on this list, why it's good at nine is because you can add that developer you're talking about. And I would just ask this.
Yeah.
Well, there is.
I I would honestly be interested in perhaps homeowner and a renter. I mean, we had that testimony the other night.
First time home buyer.
A renter is is.
Yeah, a renter, we had that testimony the other night coming about exactly what he and his neighbors are experiencing at Solana. Well, that's interesting because all of us are homeowners. We're not experiencing those kinds of jumps in um, in in our payments right now. And those are members of our community.
Okay, let's. We got, we got Lisa playing.
All right, well, can we real see, we do?
Yeah.
Yep.
I think you have that citizen as advocate also.
Okay.
You have a homeowner, a renter, developer, and nonprofit.
Yeah, urban renewal, I like.
I like urban renewal.
I like having them on there, one of their staffers.
What about looking at the long term expense of housing? And I'm thinking like, an example is when you deal with green building and energy efficiency, you really lower the cost of the housing over the long term while there's got to have front investment. You're able to lower the cost for the long term to meet after that in somewhere here.
You know what we could do? We could just list that out and just.
Yeah. I I, the only thing I would say, Randy, I'm at is I think the developers could weigh in on that.
I think so.
Uh, but it should be a provoked conversation.
Yeah.
I think the smart people would know the goods and downs because like, I I uh, we talk about solar a lot lately. I see, I'm creating conversation about CDO, but we have to have a conversation. One of the things we're finding is solar doesn't work everywhere. Doesn't make any sense. Changing your light bulbs.
Especially in the towers.
Yeah, especially.
Solar sucks in the tower.
Never works.
But we might could have like a solar garden, but, well, that's what we're talking about.
But like this one building we're working on, I was gonna put solar on top and I got pushed back because they said I would save more money by changing the light bulbs out than make solar on.
Right.
So so I I don't think, I don't think sustainability, I would be towards the developer who can try to look more broadly at what a return maybe could be or something utility person, but.
Yeah.
And I'm just, I just want to make sure it's open.
Yeah, they see that small business owner, what was the thinking of that?
Oh, um, so.
Okay, yes.
I think you need memorials to be all right.
Yeah.
Oh, you, 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 you gotta be in that.
Who, who has that workforce building that we saw? Where it had like, big here in the bottom, a restaurant and stuff, and then it was workforce.
You have a landlord on it.
All right, I don't call. Um, we had the, you know what I like is potentially, we have Arvada Housing Authority Staff optional on here. I like also having.
They got staff.
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Um, but but kind of like how we do with, um, like, for instance, a fireboard. I'm like a liaison to the fireboard. I don't sit on the fireboard.
And you've got a city council representative.
Yeah, yeah, I know. I meant that, um, city council representative. I was actually thinking more about like, our staff could be like more like liaisons, that way they're not required to be at every single meeting.
Oh, there's been a lot of.
Oh, and then they were. But I was, I was sort of thinking perhaps that status. Just saying mostly as, yeah, Arvada homeless navigator, perhaps that kind of status. And then, um, I'm shocked, I have one other thought. It'll come back to me.
So we got a pre-dentist.
Oh, fire. That is actually thinking, um, if if we're gonna be looking at codes and building things, it'd be good to have the people who are experts at like disaster. No, okay. Okay.
We gotta get down to nine.
I think we will. Can I offer a suggestion on drafting? I just think, so when you frame it, when we do the resolution, you can do a minimum number for the committee. And then you can always have more people in that on here. So it might give you a little bit more leeway without us having to go back and change the resolution later. If you decide tonight, yeah, we want that and then later we decide we don't allow it. So just food for thought.
But I would also want a ceiling if I have a home. You know?
No.
Minimum one twenty five. It sounds like a good thing when I.
Like a seven to ten.
Yeah.
You got that.
I do. I know. I live the.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve. So is there any that are essential that we definitely want on here?
Absolutely.
I say, I think, I all, I agree.
Essential, I think a landlord and real estate agent.
Absolutely.
I don't know if a landlord's essential to me. I think a real estate agent's essential. I think, uh, the developer's essential.
But going back, going back to what was said about a landlord who, there may be special uh, opportunities for them to have lower rents because they're part of some program that's gonna protect their asset interests.
So you want people to actually provide.
I think you do want a landlord on.
Okay. But all right, but if we do landlords, we have to do renters.
Yes.
Yeah.
A balance.
All right.
Yeah.
Landlord, we got friends.
I like the small business. The real estate agent.
Yeah.
Real estate agent. Obviously, the citizen advocate.
And get that citizen advocate be the homeowner as well, and 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 the retired.
Yeah.
Well, it could be.
I don't feel like we need to do retirees.
I don't either.
No. I would definitely do the two developers.
Yeah. So renter and citizen advocate and homeowner are just thinking, I mean, I think it's important to have both, a homeowner and a renter. I mean.
That's why renters should be separate.
But I'm thinking, do you take out citizen advocate and homeowner and renter? So you're clearly defining the two.
Yeah.
As both citizen advocates.
Yeah, and citizen.
They're both citizen advocates.
They're all citizens.
So I would say, take out citizen advocate and you've got homeowner and landlord.
I like it.
But can we quickly, we need to qualify the.
Homeowner and landlord all become citizen advocates.
Yeah, townhome versus.
No, 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 I, but no, first time, like me, I I I bought a lot of homes. So I mean, you know, you want something like me or you want a first time buyer who's experienced.
Well, part of that is our selection process of who we put on. We may say, you know, hey, I really like this person because.
So renter can also be the first time home buyer because they're in that situation. Yeah.
Um, I like the um, nonprofit.
Yes.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah. I like, um, and urban renewal, I think it's good.
That's nine. I would stop there, but you need city council. Well, then you have a city council and a housing staff. Yeah, but.
We have on on it, but we're on it.
That's official.
Yeah, I think they're, 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 they're.
Because currently our city council members that are our liaisons, we're not counted as one of like.
Yeah.
And I think that's better because we don't want the council member to kind of drive the train.
Yeah.
So we're at one, two, three.
I mean, so that means one, you know what, mayor? Mayor, when you say that, it's kind of, it almost makes it like you even need a reason. I think so. You do? I, because there's certain.
There'd be all kinds of.
Liaisons at all.
You know, what I can think of is parks.
No, uh, commission, uh, that's a question.
Festivals or or I guess.
Why do we not have the human services council?
Why do we not have liaisons?
Um, correct me if I'm wrong, I went to the historians of the rooms, but I think it was to keep us from influencing like housing or the uh, uh, human services one is to keep us out of the political side of it, festival commission, so we don't create favorites. I remember Gordon telling me that council member would get on there and try to create their own festivals and do their own thing to try to avoid influences. Gordon mentioned that a few times a long time ago, but hasn't happened because there's no council.
Just at Gordon's retirement, there were two members of the parks committee who were asking me if if we could have somebody start a liaison with them because they feel like they're disconnected. Yeah, and 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 need direction would have questions and wish they had access, you know.
I'm kidding, I was just trying to throw out, you know, because you're right. I mean, I worry about what the mayor says. If you get a council member in there, you gotta think beyond us, right? With somebody we don't know yet. That's on there that if they are pursuing that that group, that that kind of drives everything we're done with.
Although I see this as a strong enough group that.
There's, I know, I I agree.
I think Mark may have some team input.
Well, I just wanted, I just want to invite our subject matter expert back with me to 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 comment on this. And then I I'm going to offer and I'm not trying to put a blanket on this, but you know, a committee of this size with the scope that we're talking about is gonna require us to have an additional uh, supervisory level staff person to help to help facilitate support and and do the work that this committee is going to generate. And it's all good work. I mean, and and don't get me wrong, I'm not, I'm suggesting that we should do this, but I don't want to, we have a tendency sometimes tend to resource these things and and create situations where people, the the professional people are trying to keep up with this and their other things that they're responsible for and failing at both.
Yeah, I don't think, I'm honest to be for me, don't, you're doing the right thing by telling us the FTE. It should be for us as council to say, we want this, we gotta understand this expense, because there's an expense to this, a budget, the line for this. We've got to work within that.
But is that a hundred fifty grand annually?
I would say somewhere around a hundred forty five.
With benefits.
Yes, no.
Yeah.
Now, would that additional FTE be able to actually, like, this wouldn't be their full time job. Would they actually be able to assist and do more to help Kerry explain?
In 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 some respects, yes, but I think the activity that this, that this uh, advisory committee, housing advisory committee will generate over time will 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 start to
Yeah.
to to be absorbed in their responsibility. So for example, um, the the seeking of grants, I I I agree that a advisory committee can help us with researching grants, but the actual mechanics are putting a grant together and submitting it. Especially if it's somebody like the Department of Housing or HUD or somebody like that, you've got to have somebody that knows the business. And 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 that's likely going to, and and it takes work to put those.
Well, it has the authority to, right?
Yes.
Has the authority to.
You know, a lot of, yeah, a lot of these grants require city council approvals, resolutions. There's a lot of process work that sometimes is uh, is is not really accounted for in in working with these committees. I, again, I'm not trying to be a white blanket, I'm trying to be realistic.
No, realistic is.
Because if we put, if we go forward with this, we have to resource it properly.
Well, let me add a little bit more realism. There's lots of talk of we need a compliance person in terms of of what's going on with that and a sustainability coordinator is being talked about. So.
Just a question, on if the police department is under, they're missing thirty people. Isn't that saving a bunch of money for the past year?
They cover it with overtime.
Is it, is it, right?
So do are we, so the, like, I guess the larger question is, do we, do we have vacancy savings or salary savings? Yes, however, we don't view that as a structural kind of savings. A structural savings means we take something out of the budget as opposed to
Not sustainable.
leaving it in. We, and and, you know, we're desperately working hard to fill those positions as much as possible. Um, we do assume a certain level of salary savings in our annual budget based on the normal vacancy rate, which lets us help to stay balanced and and all that. And so we're, we're probably over that. But we don't view that as a structural kind of savings. It's 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 kind of.
If you take those, if you take those positions out of the budget, they won't be happy.
And could we could potentially combine duties? For instance, this person overseas is also a grant writer who have perhaps has sustainability. I don't know if it's a co-share across the departments.
I I don't see a a a combination with sustainability. Um, could they, uh, could they, uh, be responsible for writing grants? I think that's something that 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 certainly could happen. And could they pick up some other duties within the housing division? I think, I think that's, that's a possibility as well. Uh, but, you know, when you form a committee like this with a lot of really hard charging, you know, passionate people such as the sustainability advisory committee is, um, that will, that will create uh, that'll create a ton of amount of work because, you know, researching, you know, grants, researching opportunities to.
We're gonna have people like Lisa calling them up every flip of the day and sending memos, like, dude, hey, I just found out about this.
I toned it down, right?
I mean, it, it's, it's, it's not like, you know, it's not like I only talk to you guys every Monday night, okay?
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of e- exchange that goes on and now I have Lori and Linda both helping a little bit with that and it's really great. But the point is, is that, is that there will need to be a certain levels.
Here's what I'll do. I'll have, the next mayor will not have the mayor's helicopter anymore.
I'll save this as a budget.
Put it on eBay.
It's all very spot, we kind of landing spot for you on that.
So it's an, it's an unbudgeted position today for this budget cycle. How do you get paid for that if this, if this comes in?
Well, so, so I was just asking Kerry, do we have any ability for any of the federal funds to, uh, to fund this this position? The answer is no, because this position would not necessarily be working. The answer is no, because this position would not necessarily be working on on federal housing or CDPG uh, kinds of projects, which means we could charge them to those resources, likely it would it would come, the general fund would be one potential source, I don't know if we have any, like, the whole debt money is is.
It's allocated.
It's all allocated, so that's, it's probably a general fund expense.
There's also just my my with my job at State of Colorado, there's a bunch of ARPA housing grants that I I that I can find the list of what's available, but your point, and it was.
Yeah, well, today, we were, we were actually on a call today with the Department of.
Dole.
Uh, looking at at seeking assistance for this purpose, uh, from some Department of Housing.
You you're reading the tea leaves?
Well.
Do we read?
Yeah, I I've prepared that before too. So it's actually an obligation. Uh, so we were, so we were on a, we were on a conference call today, and I think we've asked a bit of information out of there, but I know I I had to drop off early. Uh, one of the things they talked about is uh, the timeline for applications, I think you were talking about a June at the earliest, and there's obviously some work that needs to be done in the back.
Technical systems work, yeah. You're an adult coming out of federal funding, which means there's federal reporting requirements, which adds, that's something that someone's going to have to take on anytime we're using federal dollars.
Yeah.
I could also offer a year-long, part-time intern, master levels, social worker, if you want, that might help.
We're still gonna need a person.
I know, but it's something.
So is it, is it something that could help with your certainly people on there?
I think if we're looking at ARPA funding, I think ARPA funding is a good, great way to start, but there are, it's time limited, um, you have to. Be on time before those.
A quick timeout, there's a beautiful rainbow out there.
Oh, my goodness.
So, so I think that's a sign.
It's a sign, it's a sign. And then, my last question is, for, when cities have like people who focus on doing the grant writing, probably a lot of the grants that Kerry or the other members of the team can't get to because of capacity, do they usually pull in more money than they themselves are making, like, they're operating at a profit, I would think so. So if we had, if this person, part of grant writing is institutionalized into their role, ideally, they're paying for themselves.
I believe the deputy city manager, Mark Gillis, has.
Well, I think there's two, whenever we do grants, we've had net loss grants before, okay, it costs us more to hit.
More to hit in money.
Oh, yeah, and I will, from the published works.
There was a grant, oh, yeah.
But from the published works side, we've gone through a really valuable, yes, but definitely there's pieces that we can write, but just on the funding piece of this, depending on when that position comes on, you have a half year likely to fund it the most, and then we'll be going entering that budget process and with this direction that it's included, and you see this position lined up with all the other priorities, and then it's approved and it's adopted, it's part of our core services, is what we're doing when we close positions, so depending on the timeframe to get this work, get it set up and started, it's a partial, partial year funding, and that partial half year funding, it's something that could be covered from that salary breakage, there's not, it's not endless salary breakage, but the timing of when we hire and who people live, but. So there's options, and I know that Brian, he's on here, Brian, Brian, you backing me on that? I don't know, I don't mind him participating, okay, so let's, I'm sure he is, so um.
We're allowing him.
You can allow him to talk to you.
There you go. Are they Brian or?
Oh, to go to the.
You love her to love.
Yeah, allow.
They're right there.
That's it.
Now, Brian.
Here's Brian.
Hey, Brian.
Hey, Archer, do you have some money to fund this?
Uh. So, yes, the answer is yes, what Lori said is correct, um, what Mark said is correct, just to give perspective, we have about a three and a half percent vacancy budget in the general fund, so to put dollars to that, that's about one point eight million dollars of salary savings that we have to collect before we have the ability to fund anything else. So, it'll take some time to get there, um, but certainly, you know, funding a position for half a year wouldn't be a problem.
It's gonna take us time to develop any kind of scope, any risk, scope, job description.
Well, I I I, you know, we've been taking notes and 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 we'll take a picture of that, uh, and uh, uh, you know, we've got, we can get a lot of copy of Lisa's documents.
She sent it to me.
Okay, great, so so we we've we've got all that, I think what what I would propose is that we uh, take this input and work with our subject matter experts, um, and and look at the information generated by the um, uh, root recommendations to really define that scope of work, uh, and 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 understanding, and I think, you know, listening to David's and and Mark's comments about Lisa, your your um uh, kind of focus on the first year, kind of those guardrails, I think we could, you know, design kind of a first year uh, scope of work. Um, and then the ongoing scope of work is probably something that would grow out of the first year, uh, but we, but I think the roots uh, policy study talked about you know, the advocacy work and things like that, that we would uh, probably see as as kind of a longer term scope of work, if that makes sense.
I would, I would suggest dropping out of this, he did great work on this, I really, I do think it's excellent, I think we gotta take the three hundred thousand dollar, because I think it's naive.
Yep.
Not, you're not naive.
No, no.
I hear you.
But I market is just.
I also think that number changes every year.
Exactly.
Every year, so we should let that be nine percent inflation changes.
Yeah, we could just whatever media and start.
The uh, Lauren, Lauren, Linda, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to jump on to the you were saying, uh, Mr. Devlin, in regards to the scope and fleshing that out, and you're taking notes, and I appreciate that. And I'm I'm willing to see the sustainability person being on here, but ask that as we plan out the scope, but one of the pieces is for this committee to look at is how rebuilding energy efficiency fits into the long-term savings and lowering the cost of housing.
And you might be able to get that from the bill.
Exactly, but I'm just saying, can you put that in the scope?
I think.
We're not gonna have a person on there, that's fine, but can that be part of?
Right, sure.
Yeah.
And if we want a urban renewal person or not, we decide.
I'd like, worry at nine, that's, that's why.
Without that.
Yeah, maybe, maybe they can be one of the um, like, team support people, and that comes in as they're available.
That's a good point.
In terms of.
Yeah, I'm only counting eight, where am I?
I I I.
Uh, there's two circles here. And then, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, I think.
Those don't, those don't count.
Or or.
I don't think those count, I think, I think urban renewal is the, is the right.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's how I was counting them.
Yeah.
Okay, my bad, then, yeah, urban renewal.
And thank you, uh, Randy, for agreeing to take that off, but I a hundred percent agree with you, that's got to be one of the things that they look at in terms of because I I truly believe that going green can be economic.
Well, and 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 also, I have to find like, building code people are, or building code, it's usually looking at this stuff anyways, compared in light of what we were talking about with the recent household that we were fighting. I don't know what happened to it, passed through thirty-three, thirty-two. So all the ones who said they don't know, bonus, because that's a tough one down there. This is funny, but the point is, is we're gonna look at codes anyways, and some of this.
Well, we do that regularly.
Yeah, and so a lot of the things like sustainability and improvement and greedy and stuff are gonna be in the new codes anyways. So, I mean, it's good to just codify it, some of these other committees as well.
So, so let me play my libertarian devil's advocate here, looks to me like the cost of this is about a hundred and fifty grand annually, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty grand annually. I think an average annual housing choice voucher is probably eight grand, is that right, Kerry?
Um, for household?
Yeah.
We pay about thirteen.
Thirteen thousand is the average voucher?
Yes.
Okay, so, are we better off to help another, have an extra dozen housing choice vouchers every year, year after year after year, or is this more important than that?
I think Kerry does that.
Comparative analysis, with which which provides greater value?
We're looking at you.
Okay, Kerry, I didn't ask that question, you, I asked that question of, well, of us, that's just for us, we have, for us, while you're thinking about it, are we, are we getting value for our.
So, so the vouchers, the way I look at it is the vouchers is a strategy, and it's not the strategy, but it's a strategy. Yeah, we can put put more money into that one strategy. I see the value of having a person to help drive strategy goals with a bigger group of volunteers to maybe maximize that that return, so so me in my eyes, yeah.
And they help way more as well.
That's why.
We just each have to ask, ask, that's, I'm just telling you what my, you asked it.
Yeah, 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 one fifty K more in the vouchers. I agree with what the mayor says, I think this winds up helping far more expansively.
Like you do.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, then the other thing I would ask is that as we report back to you, then we also provide a timeline in terms of when we can implement this, including getting somebody on board, um, and uh.
You may have heard from Monday night, the council likes to move things along.
So please don't say for years.
Definitely not gonna take.
Free twenty-five.
But we're also, you know, we're also working in a pretty um, challenging labor market.
Yes.
Uh, and uh, in in terms of uh, you know, getting someone, someone on board, getting a recruitment started, hiring process, getting the uh, you know, reasonable pool of applicants. Again, not trying to be the wet blanket here, but just again, wanna wanna set expectations so that we can implement what you guys want us to do, but do so in a manner that is that is reasonable.
Gabrielle is hitting the ground running, she's ready to step in and get it done.
So, can I offer an idea now, another council's, if the timing would work, I would recommend that this committee go through the normal committee process, and that the timing is acceptable?
Oh, in tandem, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, you know, with exist, with existing.
So you're saying that starting the committee till the next cycle?
Well, till the, yeah, till the show in February, where we get to interview everybody, and the reason why is because this gives us time to advertise create job description, get somebody hired, get somebody in, get a scope of work, and if you if you do that, it can go into the next budget, so.
Yeah. I.
And so it can be, can be properly budgeted rather than.
So without being on the ground running until March, March of twenty.
Next year.
Twenty-three.
Yeah, but we can lay all the foundational work in the in the next ten months.
Getting somebody hired.
Hired, I want to have somebody hired, hired to this.
Right, and have them trained in knowing their jobs.
Yeah, they need to understand the culture, they need to understand what's expected, they need to sit down with us.
And that would be great, and onboarding is, you know, our onboarding is a big deal for us, I mean, we spend a lot of time with with onboarding so that they can understand the culture and those kinds of things, so that, all of what you guys just offered here would be very helpful.
Yeah, fair, I think it's good.
We can do it.
I like it.
On that subject, I've been hearing from some other mayors that there are other ways that people are interviewing for the boards and commissions that is using like Zoom or or taped interviews and things.
That's the cool.
That's sparks.
Yeah, spark interviews.
Okay, that might be, that might be more efficient for us.
So, and all the having like come in for a.
Yeah.
Two and a half minute interview.
Right.
It's a big test, though, you know, since we have, there's so many applicants that, you know, if they don't show up, it's just. You know?
Just about, I mean, that's, you know.
Can we research the spark, I did, yes, that's all, because the spark interviews, we've done those before, where they have to get questions, they record themselves, and they send them in. You just take your top applicants and you review their answers to the five questions that they answered, so that time. Absolutely, that's what we should do, we should check into what it would cost to have spark interviews, and it would cut our time right in half, you know, absolutely.
Well, you mean, you don't like staying here till nine o'clock?
Well, I think you think that's.
Costs us, so. But I also feel bad for the folks who are running late, they have to come late, they're early, and you know, I'm trying to make an interview in their own time, in their own comfortable space, and.
And the standard questions.
Yes.
And a rubric.
And a rubric.
So, I I'm in favor of that, absolutely.
Okay, well, that's, I'll, I'll do some additional checking with mayors in terms of, and it might be that program.
Yeah, and the interviews, they even, they video them.
Right, right.
Just so you know, I don't like that, I prefer open do. Now, but but I would only, I would only say that on like maybe not the planning commission, not the urban renewal, those we probably should still do in person, but um, festivals, but yeah, I guess the festivals, we can have like fifteen interviews or twenty interviews, the festivals just take everybody's replies, right?
Okay, anything else you need from us, Mr. Devlin, on this?
Nope, I don't believe so.
Okay.
I just want to thank everyone.
And I want to talk about, do people like this process?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It's great.
This is good dialogue, it's 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 us at our best.
You're setting a high standard, Richard.
Yeah. You know, I I stand out with teachers, I just make a point here.
Hey, I have one topic you're not getting.
That sounds condensed, I could do it for you all.
Mm-hmm.
No, I I appreciate the conversation.
Yeah.
To 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 do this and have back and forth.
Exactly, and I think it gets us, for those who are more hesitant, and I would include me in that list, it gets me a lot more buy-in, so, and.
Think the back and forth is.
Yes.
Yeah.
Much better than our workshop.
This is, yeah, this is how consensus is found.
Yeah, and I mean, Lisa knows, I mean, ever since she sent this out like the second day after she was elected.
And every week after.